Welcome to the Common Good Podcast. It is February 10th. Happy February 10th to all of you. From February 10th is an important day. Glad to have you, glad to have you aboard. We're going to be talking today with Jonathan Wilson Hargrove about helping a lot of us, especially me, understand why school boards are banning books. Jonathan, really good to have you. It feels like we have flashed back to, I don't know, some period of time in the 1930s, and I don't really understand the argument. You've done some great thinking on this. You wrote a nice piece. They sent an email, and the one that's going to be, as you mentioned a minute ago, on CNN. And so, talk us through this. What do you think's going on? And what should we know about it? And what should we be doing about this? Because it's easy to just think, I don't know, school boards are, you know, school boards do dumb things. And maybe that's all that it is. But it seems like it's more than that.
Well, it's, there are a lot of people behind it, other than the people on the school boards, or the, you know, so-called parents' rights advocates who are showing up at school board meetings. I, a few years ago, published a book called Revolution of Values, and spent a good bit of time doing research when I was writing that book on the organizations that came together to sort of craft the culture war that has shaped the moral discourse in public life, really for the last 40 years. And if you pay attention to those organizations, which, I mean, some of the best scholars who follow this are Anne Nelson, a research scholar at Columbia in New York, and a woman named Catherine Stewart, who's written a couple of great books on this. But anyway, they've been following this very closely, and I've been listening to them. And they've been saying for a year now that those organizations, in their meetings, have been talking about how the way to appeal to the shrinking base, but nevertheless, the only base that the Republican Party has to appeal to, is to really to play to white fear, and to do that in ways that exploits the kind of classic divide and conquer lines. But there's always new ways to do that. And so, the newest way is to say that public schools are advocating so-called critical race theory. Not a whole lot of people have read Critical Race Theory. I'm no expert in it, but I've read a little bit. What these people are talking about is not critical race theory. It's mostly just any attempt to name the systemic way that white supremacy has perpetuated itself in American public life. That's a pretty established historical fact. It's been around. But any attempt to teach that is being called divisive by these folks. And they're trying to rile up parents to then go to school boards and say that they don't want their kids being taught these divisive things. They don't want their white kids to learn history that quote-unquote makes them feel guilty. And so, I don't think that the well-being of children is at the forefront of anyone's mind, really, in this. I think it's really about trying to mobilize a base that can win the Congress back for Republicans in the midterm elections.
Yeah, look, that's, I think, you know, that's such an insightful take. Do you think what's going on here is that there was a big movement in the last number of years, but especially the last two years, of people recognizing that race is systemically layered through our society, and anti-racist ideas are systemically layered through our society? And then, people push back. There's been a giant pushback on that. And this is the means of pushback, that a lot of us have been very encouraged about companies and media organizations, and churches, and individuals that are saying, wow, I really want to look at being anti-racist. And I think some of us naively thought that other sides of this opinion were just going to go quietly into the night and let this happen. Do you think it's just fundamentally, this is what the pushback is going to look like when people who don't want to be talking about race push back?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's what it is. You know, this is Black History Month, but the great historian Nell Painter, a black woman, wrote the first history of white people. And, you know, after nearly 400 years of whiteness being the dominant concept, a black woman at Princeton University said, you know, no one's ever written the history of white people. So she wrote the history. It's worth reading.
Is that what the book is called, The History of White People?
Yeah, History of White People. And what she says is that this is the call and response of American history, that every time there has been a call for racial justice, there has been a backlash, a concerted effort by white people to resist that. And so, that was the so-called redemption movement that followed Reconstruction. It was violent. It gave rise to the KKK. You know, it overthrew Democratic and Democratic governments in the South. It was the, you know, folks who came out when the Brown decision was passed, and we began to desegregate schools in the South. You know, the parents who came out and cursed little children and spit on them, and all that. And in the present, it is this so-called parents' rights movement. And it's tied to many other things. A lot of the same organizations are protesting the, you know, mask mandate, and are spreading misinformation about vaccines and other things. But all of this is coordinated through a network of organizations that are explicitly committed now to exploiting Christian faith in order to mobilize this base of people. The thing that's new in this era is that it's still not politically correct to be explicitly racist. And so, the way you go about this is by saying that you don't want to be quote-unquote divisive, that you want to be for unity, that you're concerned about, you know, how white children feel. And in doing so, you can appeal to people's racial fears without appearing to be racist, or at least that's the goal.
How do you suggest people respond to this, when it comes up, right? Because it is a, making the argument, let's not be so negative, let's not be so divisive. We have too much divisiveness in our policies, in our politics. Can't we all come together? And, boy, people teaching young kids that this is a hateful racist country toward people of color is divisive. That's the argument. A lot of people feel that very deeply. You know, they don't want to be divisive, but they want to tell the truth. You work hard on this at the School of Conversion, and you're the best I know at helping white people know how to think about this. What's your suggestion for people about how they respond when others in their lives say, wow, look who's the racist. Look who's the one that's being all divisive. Look who's trying to cause all the trouble?
Well, I mean, I don't think it's a battle we're going to win by fighting it out in school board meetings. I think, you know, in the immediate, the most important thing people can do is support good teachers, right? I know a lot of teachers who've been, you know, teaching for decades, who are regularly being harassed by, you know, folks who've been mobilized and trained by Turning Point USA and other groups to go to schools and to try to, you know, make an issue out of this. So, supporting good teachers who teach history, who, you know, present the truth to children, and try to help them think about what justice means, and other things, in light of American history, supporting those teachers is incredibly important. And, of course, supporting school boards and electing people who are not, you know, motivated by this base is important. But in the long term, I think what's critical is that we build movements that create a culture that has a broader base committed to the common good, and connect that to faith. Because for so long, the only faith-based organizing of any significance has been people who are appealing to this kind of extremism. And so, I think we have to build a communications network. We have to build a culture that supports really faith for the common good. And that's why I appreciate what y'all do with Vote Common Good.
Yeah. You know, Black History Month is so important, and it's, you know, every February, a lot of us say, black history is American history, right? That's a good reminder. And I've also heard some people recently saying, black history is also current life. Like, a lot of these things that we talk about and think about, and the images that get posted, and the quotes that come up, they're black and whites, they're times from the 50s and 60s and 70s. And something happens, I think, in our psyche where we start to believe, oh, this isn't going on right now. But it just seems to me, 50 years from now, right, in, you know, in 2072, people are going to look back and go, wow, they were in the middle of a serious racial, you know, conflicts in the United States at that time. And we tend to talk about it like it's history. And I know you're really good with history. So what's your thoughts on that?
Well, to know the history is to know that this is an issue that has been with us all along. Back to Sister Nell Painter, you know, this call and response has been the struggle. And what we have to recognize about our current moment, the thing that's unique now, is that in this long call and response, challenge to white supremacy, white supremacy reasserting itself, this is the first moment when that reassertion, that backlash is happening, when white people are one among many minorities, right? That's the reality. For so long, we have maintained the appearance of a multi-ethnic democracy while also having white supremacy. And the fact of the matter is, we can't have both anymore, right? So it's, so either, we're going to deal with white supremacy, or we're going to have to stop pretending to have a democracy. And in so many ways, that's what's happening with the struggle around voting rights, and even the, you know, right of legislatures to overturn the results of elections. It's a, you know, fundamental question.
A lot of the pushback that I hear comes from around schools and books, and what's taught, and what's in the curriculum, and so on, comes from people trying to say things like, look, this isn't appropriate content for children. Yes, there's some histories in the United States, but when you start to describe even the accurate history of the United States to children, they don't have the ability to think about this critically in a historic context, and take into light all the changes that have come about in the last 100, 150, 200 years. And so, you end up affecting children, black children, white children, people of mixed racial backgrounds, and you're creating a reality, you're creating an experience in them that's not the same as talking about this amongst adults. Do you have thoughts about that, about how we should be talking about the true history of our country with children?
Well, I think it's fair to ask, at what point do children have to start dealing with it? And for folks who don't have this experience, I'll tell you, I live in a predominantly African-American neighborhood, and the boys in particular in our neighborhood have to stop on their bicycles and answer questions from the police at about six or seven years old. That's when my son and his, you know, friends first started telling me, hey, the police stopped and asked us what our names were and where we lived. So, if, you know, if kids are dealing with the realities of institutional racism from six or seven, they probably ought to be learning about it, and learning how to talk about it among their peers. So, of course, there are, you know, more complex questions that you can ask the older you get. But I think some level of dealing with it is pretty important from elementary school on.
Yeah. Do you, you know, I was in Germany in 2006, and I had very interesting conversations with Germans kind of in their mid-30s to mid-40s. And they talked about how, for them growing up, they felt like they were in a different place than Americans, because Americans, like me, they said, your grandparents tell you a story of being heroes. Our grandparents have to tell the story of being the villains. And America doesn't want that reality. We don't want to tell the story of the villainous actions of our people. Germany was faced with that. I don't know that it's always gone well or easily in Germany. You know, there's a lot of, you know, counter pressures to retell the story even of the 1920s and 30s and 40s differently. That feels like it's part of the American psyche, how we talk about the realities of our history, frankly, whether it's to children or to adults. How, you know, there's this fundamental story where we all, that we want to all tell, where America is good, or at least is trying to be good. You know, it's not perfect. Trying to get to a perfect union, you know, we have this great thing we're working on. Do you think it's, like, what language should we use? Should we say, America is good? America is complicated? Like, how do you, how do you talk about it? Because that feels like the thing people are pushing back on, is you keep saying this stuff to these kids in school, and they're going to think America is bad, and that's not good for them, that's not good for the country, that's, you know, that's where, that's where the pushback comes from.
Yeah. Well, you know, I finished high school in Germany, and I have a distinct memory of sitting with the grandfather of the family that I lived with. And at Christmas dinner, he opened up and shared with me his own history of being in the Hitler Youth when he was a teenager. And he wept, as he told me that they thought they were doing what was right. He said, every teacher I had, everyone in the community said that this was, this was right. I thought I would, and, you know, these were, you know, he said this through tears. And I realized, when he said it, that, you know, as a guy who grew up in the South, my grandma had that in me, about, you know, the Klan, or, you know, the white supremacist Democratic Party that they and their parents have been part of. And I think what, what we have to learn by telling the truth about history is that people always good. Done the worst things in the world, thought they were doing good when they were doing it. And until we grapple with the capacity for evil, even when we think we're doing good, I don't think we can be honest about the past, or about voices in the present.
Do you think people, I mean, do you think folks in Germany, or I know people, you know, in Rwanda have dealt with their, with their recent history, and South Africa, like, is there something that we know from countries and cultures that have had to reconcile with their own dark moments of history that we should be taking advantage of here? Like, beyond an individual level, or, you know, it just, it feels like that's the thing that we can't seem to get over. We can't even apologize for dropping nuclear bombs on two cities in Japan at the end of World War II. Like, will not even consider that that was a war crime, and a violation of any human goodness. So, it just seems to be, you know, through, or any war we've ever been in, or, you know, taking over the lands of indigenous people. Like, there's just no apologies. You know, we had a previous president that said, I don't apologize for anything. Kind of, and that's an American attitude. Like, we don't apologize. We, you know, that's, that's a, that's a thing. I don't know what we do about that.
Well, the Truth and Regulation Commissions are one example that at least demonstrate, you know, a community's capacity to face the truth. And one of the things you learn when you look at, you know, people who face the truth, is that there is, within humanity, the capacity to forgive. Not that anybody can compel forgiveness, but it's inspiring to see that there is that capacity for forgiveness, and to imagine a future together, right? People who have been violently at odds with one another have imagined a future together. And I think that's also an important part of our history that gets obscured and overlooked. And this piece that Reverend Barber and I wrote for CNN is actually about the big lie, I think it's the big lie that has sustained white supremacy, the big lie that black power has been bad news for white people. And it's just not true, when you look at the history, right? If you look at these moments when there have been big surges of, you know, black participation and black power in American democracy, it's been by and large very good for white people. A lot of this pushback on books and such has targeted the 1619 Project. And I was so excited about the 1619 Project, that our family organized, right as it was coming out, it was the 400th anniversary, you know, of the first recorded enslaved Africans arriving in the Virginia Colony. We don't live that far away from there, so we made a trip. It was three generations of my white Southern family, my parents, you know, our, me and my wife and our kids. We went out there, and, you know, we sort of made it a pilgrimage, and we listened to the stories. And one of the things you learn at Fort Monroe, which is where the ship arrived, is that that fort has played a kind of critical role in history for some time. It's the fort where Jefferson Davis was imprisoned after the Civil War. It's also the fort where the first enslaved people ran away and got to Union troops during the beginning of the Civil War, and appealed to the general, and said, look, you know, the, these people who claim to own us are in rebellion against the United States, you know, will you, will you grant us our freedom? And he issued the first order, that, you know, that made it kind of the deal, that if you got across the lines, you were, you were free. So, that fort became a refuge during the Civil War. And when you go there, there's this tree in the middle, and they told us, when we got there, that as formerly enslaved people, you know, came here for refuge, they began to organize themselves, and they used this tree as a place to start a school. And it became this kind of anchor for them, of the hope of a future in this country if they could have education. And if you know the history of Reconstruction, you know that immediately after the war, when folks were able to vote for the first time, they voted in coalitions that made public education a reality for everyone in the South for the first time, right? So, we stood under that tree, my white family, you know, three generations of white folks in North Carolina who have benefited from public education, and talked about what it meant that, you know, black people, when they gained their freedom, advocated for something that had really made our own families' wealth and well-being in the South possible. I think we often overlook that, and forget that a lot of white people have benefited from the political action of black folks when they've had the opportunity to participate in democracy.
Can you describe more broadly what the 1619 Project is? You know, a lot of people that I know don't really follow it or know what it is. If you follow conservative talk radio, you tend to have a view of it, and that phrase comes around, and people are opposed to it. But it's kind of slid by, slid by, I think, a lot of people who should be, who would be quite encouraged, encouraged by it. Can you talk a bit about it?
Well, Nikole Hannah-Jones, a very good journalist at The New York Times, she won the Pulitzer Prize. She, when she saw this anniversary coming, the anniversary I was talking about, the 400th anniversary, she decided to curate a project where journalists and sociologists and historians would retell the story of America from the perspective of that arrival, right? So, often, we talk about the sort of Plymouth Rock arrival, and that kind of triumphalistic story that you were referencing earlier, where, you know, we sort of always have to be the good guys, is often told from that perspective. But she was, she was simply asking the question, what if we rethought about the story of this country, and the story of what democracy has meant in this country, from the perspective of 1619, when this first ship of enslaved people arrived here, and became part of the colonial experiment that would lead to, you know, American democracy, the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, but also led to the practice of race-based chattel slavery. And she has told that story, and first in a magazine, New York Times Magazine, that was published on the anniversary, and now in a book. And it has been attacked by the kind of right-wing reactionary machine that we were talking about earlier, largely, I think, because of its effectiveness. It does, I think, a very good job of raising the question of how, if we look closely at history, how can we see this issue of white supremacy, not only as something that was there, present in the Virginia Colony, but has continued to morph and reassert itself throughout our history in systemic ways, that are borne out by the data? I mean, the other, the other big enemy of this machine is Ibram X. Kendi, and he's the historian who's written on anti-racism, and won the National Book Award for his book Stand From the Beginning. But what Brother Ibram is very good at is simply pointing to the data, and saying, if, across the board, whether you're looking at health disparity, or education disparity, or wealth disparity, the reality is that there's, there's a huge gap between white folks and black folks in America. And he says, if you accept that fact, then there's only two ways to explain it. Either you believe that black people are inferior, or you believe that there is some systemic thing going on that makes things worse for black people in this country. And so, I mean, I think that's a hard thing to deny. So, they try to attack these folks, attack their character, attack their scholarship, this sort of thing, you know?
And it was a big, it was a big question when that 1619 Project came out, around, where should we start the history of America? So, one of the pushbacks to the 1619 Project was the 1776 Project, that I think the Trump team and so on were around, right? They were trying to say, the, trying to frame the narrative in a different set of conditions, not with slave ships showing up. And don't start the story there, start the story somewhere else with a different set of characters, and a different, and a different storyline. And that's part of history, right? Like, deciding what, because history is just lived moments that people are reflecting on, right, looking back on. So, you're always picking a moment when you're going to start, and when you're going to stop, and calling something, calling something history. There was one of those movies, I don't know, some Disney movie, the Hakuna Matata one or something, where the guy, you know, the character hits the other one on the head, and he's talking about the past or something. I just remember a part where he hits him on the head, and then he says, why'd you do that? And he goes, don't bring that up, that's in the past. Like, you know, you can't keep bringing up the past, it's something I did, you know, I did minutes ago. You should only, only live in the moment. But this, and I think we all struggle with that, right? Like, how, how do we know what parts of the story do we tell, and how we tell them? One of the things you've done so well, in the work that I've watched you do, is to invite people to always see the places where people doing good and right things, where movements of goodness were also happening, and were also taking place, and reminding any of us who are trying to live in this moment, that you're actually part of a long lineage, like having a historical view of those kinds of actions. So, I'm interested now, just in you, you know, in the Jonathan Wilson Hargrove brain and heart, how do you do that? And, and can you do some of that for us now? And why do you think that's so important?
Well, I think it's important, because if you can't remember and tell stories that way, you can't live that way. And let's take 1619 as an example, right? You can say, as, you know, the reactionary movement is saying, that to look back and consider our founding in 1619 is to somehow make us feel bad and guilty about our racist past. Or, you can look at the moment and realize that these, you know, folks who had been stolen from Africa, and then the ship that they were on had actually been taken over by pirates, and the pirates are who sold them to the colonists. So, you know, it was a mess. And they grew up here. And the reality is, their skin was dark, the folks who purchased them had lighter skin. But in many ways, the situation of most people in the colonies at that time was not very different, right? There were very few people who, by virtue of their connection to the king, had, you know, the power of the military and some real economic power. And everybody else was in the situation of being basically on their own. And it's not until in the Virginia history, you get to the case of Brother John Punch, that race becomes this thing that makes you different than other indentured servants. John Punch is this black man, a man of African descent, who runs away with these two lighter-skinned fellows, European descent. And And when they're caught and it comes before the court in the Virginia colony, the judge rules that these lighter skinned folks will have, I think it's six or seven additional years added to their indenture. And then turns around and rules that the dark skinned Brother John Punch will be sentenced to perpetual servitude. And now, for the first time in Virginia case law, you get this idea that servitude, slavery, is tied to the color of skin. Why does he do it? He does it because the, the, the owner class in the colony is in a crisis. They don't, they don't know how they're going to hold on to power. They have things like Bacon's Rebellion, where black and white and native folks actually overthrow the government for a time. And, you know, the British Navy has to come over from England and save these folks' hide. Because if the people who are really the majority come together, they have, there are more of them than there are elites. Well, if you know that kind of history, you know that the same kind of thing is possible in the present, right? If poor white folks who so often buy these lies would get together with Latino folks who are often working for less than a living wage and black folks who are often working for less than a living wage and form a political alliance that says, if we're going to have a government, we're going to make sure this government works for us, we're going to make sure it guarantees us the things that are necessary for us and our families to live. Well, that's, that means that democracy could have an incredible amount of power to overcome the corporate greed that has created the greatest inequality that we've seen in this country since the Gilded Age. But what keeps us from that, what keeps us from that is this sort of mythical stories that are told to us that give us some sort of imagination of greatness that we can live in while we continue to have the sort of disparity that, that is exceptional, but not exceptional in a good way. It's exceptional in, if you look at the wealthy countries of the world, we're pretty much at the bottom in terms of the health outcomes, the education outcomes and the well being outcomes for most people.
Yeah. I, I'm three episodes into a documentary series on HBO called Exterminate All the Brutes. Are you familiar with this at all? It's produced by Raul Peck. I would.
My old friend, sure.
Yeah, I mean, you know, he's a great filmmaker and I first knew him in the film, I'm Not Your Negro, and, but he's Haitian born and, and he narrates a three-part documentary about the history of America and using this phrase from the 1500s of exterminate all the brutes as sort of the theme that runs, that runs through it. It's really quite powerful. He tells the story of the last 500, 700 years differently than other, not differently in content, in different order. And so he will like take a theme and run it through the 500 years period of time rather than sort of moving chronologically. And it's a really powerful way to, to get around it. And it had me really thinking about just the need for some different storytelling and the need for a different, a different call response. I feel like we've just fallen into some pretty typical patterns on, on how this, you know, the political sides, the race opinion sides know what the others are going to do, you know, it's, it's pretty uniform. It's, 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 it's got a choreographed narrative to it. You just know how this is going to go. And it seems like we need some different, some different narrators and some different storytellers. And, and I know you do, you know, you spend a lot of time thinking about that, so I'm wondering your thoughts on that.
Well, it reminds me of Wendell Berry's Mad Farmers' Manifesto. You remember where he says, when they, when they capture the pattern of your mind, lose it?
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, we do need some kind of holy foolishness. I think I see it most often among the people who live with their backs against the ball and have to figure out how to survive and, and are finding creative ways to resist. I think a lot of people don't realize that we're living in the midst of the greatest general strike in US history. We've never had, we've never had this many people, you know, unorganized, walk off their jobs. But literally, you know, tens of billions of people over the last year have just said, I'm not working for this anymore. I don't, I don't, might not know what's next, I don't know what, but, but I'm not going to work for this anymore. They've said it to their bosses, they've said it to whoever. But that's an incredible upsurge of a kind of populism that could be, that could be leveraged for real change. Because we're sort of right on a tipping point in terms of the political balance right now of a willingness to have really transformative policies at the federal level. You know, we, we, there's been all this talk about great disappointment and such because the Democrats in the Senate have not been able to pass so many of the things that were proposed. But the reality is they did pass the House and they're often one or two votes short in the Senate. That's very close, a lot closer than we've been in a long time. And I think, you know, with the midterms coming, there's a possibility that people who are willing to walk off their jobs, people who are willing to do, you know, radical things, people who've been out here resisting evictions, you know, saying, you're not going to kick us out of our homes, this is the only place we have to live. If those folks could organize and could elect a few more senators who are willing to pass policies that, that really do guarantee the basic things that people need to survive, that could make a huge difference for tens of millions of people in this country. And that's what we're working for in the Poor People's Campaign. It's why we're mobilizing for a mass Poor Peoples and Low Wage Workers Assembly in Washington, June 18th. Hopefully, everybody listening will join us there and especially connect with the poor and low wage workers in your state who are mobilizing towards that because it's an important movement to be part of.
Yeah, well, we're going to definitely have you back on and talk about that and we'll be promoting that through all of our channels that people would, would join in there. I heard Katie Porter, who's a Congresswoman from California, she was on a news show last night and I'm a big fan of Katie Porter, so whenever she comes on, I, I spend some time watching.
She's the one with the whiteboard, right? She has the whiteboard.
She's the one with the whiteboard that wants to, you know, like a law professor's, like, you know, and had that great bit with Jamie Dimon where, you know, from, you know, saying, how can someone pay back their loans when, somebody who works for you when you don't pay them enough and they can't even, you know, pay back the loans that you have for them? So she's, she's tapped into that. But her particular bill that she's pushing is a bill that will restrict elected, federal elected officials from buying or trading stock. That'll just put a stop to this because they have rules about it, they all violate it. So that was her, that was her bet. And the, the person doing the interview asked her, he said, you know, this has like 80% support in, in Congress, people on both sides. And he said, I can't really understand why sometimes things get a lot of bipartisan support and sometimes they don't. And it doesn't really make sense, like you can't figure out the formula for it. And her answer was, and she named two or three bills that she's been a part of that have great bipartisan support, she said, it's when 80% of the American population supports something that 80% of Congress does. Now, I think that's true, most of the time guns are an exception and gun laws. But that's kind of what you're getting at, right? Like a, a, a public raising of these issues is, because Congress, people in Congress always say, I only have the power of my constituents, right? And then constituents are like, I just need to get one or two more senators. And we get into this like finger, you know, pointing of who really has the power. Is that what you're getting at, that we really need these people movements to give the clarity and the fullness of spirit to the, to, to people who are going to make these laws, if they're going to pass laws that are going to change?
Yeah, it's what has always shifted the public conversation in ways that has made policy change possible. If you, if you study the, the real policy change that we saw in this 1960s and what we usually call the Civil Rights Movement, you know, 1965 is not an election year. And at the beginning of 1965, there's not a majority of Congress that's willing to pass voting rights legislation. But Dr. King and the Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee realized that if they go to Selma, Alabama, and if they use national media to expose the extremism of the, you know, violence that was being used to deny black folks in Dallas County the chance to register to vote, that that could create the opportunity for a movement to galvanize the moral will of the country to change. And that's what, that's what happens. It's what changes public opinion, it's what compels Lyndon Johnson to go give an address to Congress, and it's what, it's what builds a majority, a bipartisan majority in the Congress that passed the Voting Rights Act. That's what we need now, and we need it not only on voting rights, but on sort of basic human rights, right? The things that, that we do have 70, 80% of support in the country on, but we can't get Congress to move on because their corporate donors are pushing them to resist, you know, to resist it.
Hey, do you have a minute to, to look at some of the comments that people have made?
Sure.
And give some comments? We, we love to show some of these and then sometimes, it's a little hard to read, I'm sorry, the colors are so quirky. I'm going to see if I can change that, change that color.
It's more blue.
Live while we, that's right, live while we do this. I'll try to figure out if I could change the color of this nonsense. You know, I don't have, I don't have Dan today, so, you know, I'm just a man lost in his, lost in himself. And I don't know where the, is it now? No. All right, I'm going to try one more time. But Susan's comment is, in our district, talking about the banning of the books, she said, it was one person who brought this to the, to the surface, which I think is kind of interesting. So, you know, and she said, and that person has, quote, no dog in the hunt who brought this to the school board at all, no children or grandchildren or other relatives in county schools. Is that something that you've, that you've seen as you've paid attention to this? Are people, that it's not parents alone that are, that are kind of organizing this? Like, I don't know that that matters, it's just it would be interesting to know if it, if it's the case, that it's not parents themselves?
Yeah, it's, it's not something that has bubbled up from, you know, the experience of parents having a conversation with their kids about something they were reading and then saying, oh, this is, this is really not good for them, we need to go talk to the school about it. It's coming directly from these organizations that frankly, a lot of retired people are members of, that are, that are inviting them to trainings where they teach them how to challenge books at their school board meetings, and then they go back to their school board meetings and challenge those books. I would venture that many of these people who probably are grandparents haven't even talked to their grandkids about the books that they're reading, they're just doing what the training taught them to do. And, and doing it, again, not out of concern so much for their grandkids, although they might believe that, that that is what they're doing, but they're, they're doing it because it's serving a political end.
Well, Steffi Ru gets, gets at that a little bit here. She says, we've got a group that's going around to local libraries, taking pictures of books that they believe are inappropriate and obscene for children, they return to harass the librarians. Plus, they're encouraging parents to tell their kids to photograph books, sorry, to photograph books in school libraries to challenge them as well. Being a librarian on a school board has gotten very interesting in the last few months.
Yes, indeed.
Something, huh?
Yes, indeed.
Yeah, I mean, this is, you know, and there's part of me that thinks, yeah, you know, this isn't what they signed up for, of course, we should, librarians shouldn't have to take this kind of brunt. Then there's another piece of me that's like, look, we all have to deal with this stuff. I'm, I'm not being hard on librarians or saying tough for you librarian, of course, now we got to figure out a better way to, you know, for this to be processed. But local school boards and individual actors and so on, like, we all have to have the way to respond to these kinds of questions and not simply say to ourselves, hey, that's, that's not really my, it's not really my problem. I feel like some of the struggles we have in our society is we too often say, it's not really my problem to, to deal with. And so let's encourage our, our librarians, let's encourage our school boards. Like, most of us, a lot of parents, I'll admit this, when my kids are in school, a lot of parents, they don't even know the names of their kids' teachers, let alone the names of the administrators or the school board members, like, no idea who those people are. And if you do, you're, good for you, and you're in the minority. So most people are totally disconnected from, from these kinds of issues. And it feels like it gets taken over by, you know, not, not activists, but people that, you know, have a, have a very strongly expressed opinion.
Well, I mean, if you spend any time in activist circles, you've probably heard the research on this, that on any issue, it, it takes about 3% of the population being actively mobilized in order to make it a major political issue. So this has become a major political issue, and I would guess in most communities, it's, you know, less than 3% of people who actually care about it, right? And a lot of these people are, you know, members of these organizations that have decided to make this their mobilizing strategy. So, so, you know, how do we respond to that? I, I mean, I think we should have activism around issues that really do matter, right? So, I mean, I've mentioned the Poor People's Campaign, I think there are lots of other local struggles that people can be involved in that can lift up issues that, you know, are of real concern. I mean, let's take public education, for example. Public education has been under assault in most states that are led by Republicans for over a decade, right? There's, there's a systemic effort to defund public education, to privatize it, to spread public dollars to, you know, private schools where, you know, the money can be used without oversight and those kind of things. If you care about public education, I mean, there's something to get involved in, like, there are issues, you know, that people can mobilize around for sure. But I think you're right, there's also just kind of building a culture where we support and care for people who are on the front lines of this particular struggle. So, you know, if you know in your congregation, in your community, people who are history teachers, people who are librarians, people who are on school boards, they probably are catching some heat on this, right? So, you know, ask them how they're doing, ask them what you can do to support. Because I think, you know, having the support of the community over and against the 1% or 2% or 3% of people who are, who are going to be harassing them about this is incredibly important.
And I guess it's, it's true that schools have been for the last, I don't know, 80 or 100 years, the maybe 120 years, the center point of a lot of public activism, how we deal with things in schools, around race, you know, around teaching evolution, around who can go, around if we're going to fund it through 12th grade or only through 9th grade. Like, all of these social questions have really focused around schools for some reason. And maybe, do you have thoughts on that? Like, is that because we get, it tugs on a different part of our emotional center when we talk about our kids and schools are like kid centric? Do you think that's, that's what that is? Or why, why are schools so often found at the center of, of all of this?
That probably is why a lot of us feel so strongly about it, you know, the, the young people we care most about are directly engaged there. But John Adams said at the very beginning that there could be no democracy without a robust public education, because he said, where else are people in a community across class, across race, across whatever divisions are, where else are people going to come together and learn how to negotiate stuff if not in public schools, right? I mean, what, what institution do we have that's, that, you know, allows for a kind of commons like the public school does? I don't think there is anything else. And of course, it wasn't as diverse back then as it is now, but, but I, I mean, I think it's important to visit schools these days, especially just to recognize that so much of what we think America looks like is just not true when you visit the schools, even in rural communities, you know? I've, I've visited schools in rural communities where white, little white kids are the minority because there's, you know, there's so many Latino kids who've moved in, there's in lots of communities. I mean, I've visited a little community in Georgia where half the population is Burmese, you know? And most of the kids in the elementary school were Burmese.
Wow. Yeah, and, and, and because it's public school, it doesn't sort people away from one another the way other parts of our society, other parts of our society do. Well, now, a couple of other comments. Tim, Tim Bauer says white fright and lays it on, on that. And do you think that's, that's true? You know, there was a 1960s kind of white flight narrative that went around. Do you think it's got something to do with this white fright? I know, I know that's a big conversation point for a lot of people around the white fragility and some of the rest of it.
Yeah. It is, I mean, fear is involved for sure, and that's, that's why I think the, the lie that black power has been bad for white people is an important one to dispel. But I don't think most people think they're motivated by fear.
Yeah.
I think most people think that they're defending something good or fighting for what is right and even consider themselves sort of courageous over and against others who they would think of as fearful. So. So I think the psychology of it is a little complicated.
Boy, I think that's, that's really wise. All right, here's, here's another comment. Marie says, the people on the political right want to ban books that actually educate our kids but won't ban guns that kill them. And, you know, that a lot of people, I think, felt this was a curious conversation in the time when it feels like school shootings are still the thing a lot of parents worry about.
Yeah.
And yet, that's getting no real social movement. I mean, there's a bit of Moms Demand Action and Everytown and some other organizations that are doing great work. But this banning books things, thing has a kind of energy that even banning weapons and protecting schools from, from armed assailants doesn't, doesn't really have.
Well, that's true in terms of the kind of a narrative that we see. I don't think it's actually true in terms of most people's concern, level of concern. I, I really do want to stress that the organizations that are pushing this parents' rights and book banning stuff are incredibly well-funded and teach people to be sort of extremely active in performative ways that they know will grab media attention. It's not that big of a movement, though. There are way more people in this country who are concerned about their kids going to school and getting shot than there are people who are concerned about their kids reading some book that makes them feel guilty. I guarantee it. I guarantee it.
Yeah, and, and good point. And yet, the one smaller backed narrative has lots of support. Katie has an interesting comment. She says, I'm a leftist and plan to homeschool my future children because of the book bans. There's an interesting kind of connection between the people who choose to homeschool for, for many reasons, but because they don't like what's going on in schools. There's people on the very conservative side and people, you know, self-prescribed like Katie, who say I'm a leftist. How does that strike you? People just saying, hey, I'm out. Like, a public school is not going to be the avenue that I'm going to take for my own, for my own children, current or, or future?
Well, I mean, I would say to any parents that are concerned about the education that their kids are getting or could get, that's an important concern and an active involvement in that is incredibly important. But I would say, please don't give up on public schools because there are a lot of people, because of the economic reality that we live in, who just simply cannot be there during those hours of the day, no matter how much they care about their kids. If their kids are going to eat and have a place to live, they can't be there to teach their kids. And so we need people who have time and who do have energy to be involved in the public schools. And I'll tell you, if you don't already know, that there's not a public school in this country that won't accept your volunteer help if you show up and say, you know, you want to help in the classroom, even you want to help, you know, teach some of these things that you think are important. There's plenty of room for that in almost every public school.
That's really well said. Because there is a bit of a anti-public anything movement afoot in the United States, right? From public health to public education, you know, to, to civics that's more inclusive and more public and not so tribal, tribal, like that, that is under attack for some reason.
Five years ago, five years ago, the only anti-vaxers I knew were sort of lefties.
Yeah.
Who thought that the corporate pharmaceutical companies were trying to poison their kids, you know, that, that kind of thing. Now, you know, the, the right has certainly captured the anti-vax movement. But, but yes, there is a, there, there is a way in which I think any of us who benefit from white privilege in this country can be drawn to think that separatism is the best way for us and those we love. And I think that if we consider the common good and the way in which these public institutions impact so many people's lives, we have to have some concern about how we're going to invest in the systems that impact most people in our communities.
Well, Marjorie has a thought about that. She's a bit of a philosopher and theologian on this. She says, all of mankind is a component of God or the Great Source. We can never not be. We're all one. Religion and racism are major causes of separation of mankind. We're subconsciously programmed, we're subconsciously programmed to believe that there is a difference, that one is superior to the other. However, however, we are inseparable in the soul. So I think she's getting at something where there's like these, something in humanity that wants to keep segregating and pulling people apart. And the history of people treating one another the way that white people treat non-white people in the United States has been a consistent pattern through the human experience. So it's a very culturally specific moments that we're in and also a common human moment that we're in. So I guess we're in a larger history of, you know, how we're going to not turn one against the other. You know, the Hebrew, the Hebrew story starts out with the Son of God has two sons and then one kills the other one. So, you know, that, that the sons of the Son of God are very capable of murderous acts to one another, even as brothers. And, and that's a thing that we're, you know, is built into us somehow that feels like we have to find ways to resist.
It's right at the heart of the struggle. And I, I think she's absolutely right that we can't get away from it, we can't ignore it. I would, I would just push back and say, I think we also have to be honest about the fact that religion has been on both sides.
Okay. Yeah, I know you're good at this. Talk about that.
There is, there is bad religion that has given people justification for doing evil things. But if you have spent time among those people who have been, you know, oppressed, who've been pushed to the margins, who've been marginalized and crushed by the societies that they lived in, in most parts of the world, you will find that religion gave them a, a taproot of resistance, a source from which to assert their own dignity and humanity. And so, and so I think religion, I mean, religion is a modern term we use to describe it. But whatever you call that connection with our source, our creator, I think it has an incredible power for good or for evil. And I want to point people towards the power it has for good.
Yeah, well, really well said. Well, when we were talking about the Poor People's Action in Washington DC on June 18th, Peggy chimed in, I will be there. So you at least have one.
All right, Peggy.
That you know is, that you know is coming. Peggy's, Peggy's gonna be.
You won't be alone, Peggy.
She won't be alone. Hey, Mike has a, has a comment here. It's, it's kind of long, but he kind of gets to the question of how should we respond with all of this organizing dark money, all of this stuff that you've said exists, that they have kind of a propaganda machine of conspiracy-filled controversies? How do decent, average, ordinary people respond to that? I know you've, you mentioned that kind of thing throughout this conversation, but any, any further thoughts on that?
Well, I think we have to talk about it and we have to make it common knowledge because the only way to stop it would be to gain enough political power to pass laws that make it illegal. And particularly because of the actions of the current Supreme Court, the courts are not going to stop it. So this is one of the many things that we just don't have the will for yet in Congress, which means we need a movement, right? We need people who understand that at the root of a lot of our divisions is misinformation and that that misinformation is corporately funded and that we're not going to see a change in that until we elect representatives who resist those corporate influences. And that's, that's at stake in every election. It's certainly at stake this coming fall. And I, I think there's some real hope if poor and low-income people who don't benefit from these, you know, corporately backed politicians, whether they're Democrats or Republicans, elect new people, that there could be a new majority in the Senate next, next time around. Again, I, I encourage people to look beyond the parties. The Democrats have a slight majority in the Senate right now, but people, the people who are willing to challenge corporations are not a majority in the Senate.
Yeah, you know, and it's really, it's troubling on both sides because you're so right about the corporate dollars. And then some of the greatest misinformation machines in the current elected office, the Marjorie Taylor Greene's, the Matt Gaetz, the Lauren Boebert's, these people that are just constantly pumping this stuff out, they're funded by small donors from all over the country. And we've created many easy apparatus for delivering money to candidates. I give money to candidates that are, I don't know, that I don't vote for, right? I give money to people I don't vote for because I want them to share an idea. So that's another thing that has, that has happened where a lot of the really most extreme stuff is coming from people that don't take corporate money. They take small donations in the millions and they're actually ginning up this whole, and what that group has done the last five years is created a deep infrastructure to fund with small donations. And if you get on their email list, which, you know, some of us are on for professional capacities, you watch it happen and, and how they do it. So it, we're, we're really dealing with this thing kind of on, on both ends. And money in politics obviously is a big deal. And it just takes so much. But man, these, some of these folks can just live in a silo, whether their silo is they only listen to the corporations and not their constituents, or they listen to donors who also are not their constituents. And I don't know if you can, you know, if it's, I don't know what kind of reforms are necessary there, but, and, you know, this is more of a Tuesday conversation on our, on our topics, on, around here, talking about the specifics of politics. But it, we just have a lot of things to be figuring out about the misinformation pots that are being stirred up on, on a constant basis. All right, well, lots of other comments. Kathy has some, Elaine, Dave, I'll just pop Dave's up there because it's just short and sweet. He just says, public schools are the best. He really thinks they're, they're really something. And so lots of other people that are making comments today, Susan and all of you, Kathy. Thanks, thanks for all your comments. We don't have time to get to, get to all of them. But Jonathan, thank, thank you for your article. We'll be sharing it around on CNN today. If you, if you look at CNN online, there'll be an article, is that where it is, the CNN online? Am I in the right place? So folks should go to the CNN online and find this and share it. And Jonathan, thanks for all your good work and your friendship and your clear voice on these things.
Thank you. Good to see you.
All right, good to see you. Bye-bye.